Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this business meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. It's Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you all for being here in our full council chambers. Good to see everybody tonight. Glad, glad you're here and glad for the reason that you're here. We will begin our meeting as we always do. If you're able, if you could please rise and remove your cap and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, and once again, welcome. Welcome to everyone watching online tonight. We are down, we are two at, we are at five council members tonight. We have two of our council members missing. Councilmember Mu is missing, and Councilmember Carter is missing because earlier this evening, or earlier today, she actually finished the Boston Marathon in like eight-minute miles. And so, we're very impressed with, with Councilmember Carter, and she's taking a well-deserved night off right now, so congratulations to her. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda, and we've got a couple of things. Under our introductory items, we will meet our new employees, and we will swear in our new firefighters, which I'm very much looking forward to. We have two proclamations this evening, one for Arbor Day and one for Volunteer Recognition Week. Councilmember Martin has our consent agenda tonight, and we have twenty-one items on the consent business. Under hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we've got two public hearings this evening. The first is to approve our two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Budget, and the second, a public hearing regarding some changes to our rank choice voting ordinance. Under item five, our organizational business, we will have an update on the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan, and then we'll finish our meeting as we typically do with our council policy and issue update. Counselor, is there anything to add or any changes to our agenda this evening? If not, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five-zero. We have an agenda, and our first item on that agenda is the introduction of new employees. And we have, I believe, two employees this evening who are new, and, let me see, and I lost, I lost the sheet. Dave, you're gonna take care of us for it, aren't you?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, it's my honor tonight to introduce two new park maintenance employees. Our first one here is Grant. Yes, come on up, Grant. Grant has experience with Ramsey County Park and Recreation, where he worked in the soil and water conservation area for a while, doing some aquatic invasive and terrestrial invasive work. He's a graduate of Saint John's University with a degree in environmental science, and I'm just gonna let him say a few words about what, what brought him to a job at Bloomington.
Sounds good. Good evening, Grant, welcome.
Good evening. It's great to meet all of you. Yeah, as Dave stated, I've worked previously with Ramsey County Parks and Recreation, so I do have some fair amount of work experience with kind of parks and rec and sort of city government and such. And prior to that, I worked in Conservation Corps, Minnesota and Iowa, so the same sort of general line of work of working in the outdoors, kind of natural resource management, which is in line with the parkkeeper position. So, that's kind of what drew me to this position. And, yeah, it's a good opportunity and great people to work with, great environment, and happy to contribute to the city of Bloomington.
And I would agree, great people to work with, great environment, and we're very happy to have you here. Welcome aboard. Thank you for being here this evening. Thanks, welcome to Bloomington.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Grant. Next up is Savino Ranallo. He comes to us with experience with Anoka, or the city of Anoka Parks, I'm sorry. Prior to that, he worked for an environmental consulting firm doing restoration work. He has a degree from Montana State University, so I'll let him say a few words about what drew him to Bloomington.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. It's good to be here. My name's Savino. I'm coming from the city of Anoka, so I have a little previous experience in municipal work. I've always really had a passion for the environment, and it's kind of always been something that I wanted to make a career out of, and I saw the posting online and applied for it, and sure enough, I got it. So, I'm excited to be here and, you know, put my passion first, so.
Well, good, and we're very happy to have you here. Thanks, thanks much. Thanks for being here tonight. Thanks to both of you for, for coming in this evening and saying hello, and if, if anybody here, if you see these folks out and about, be sure to say hello to them, thank them for their work, and welcome them to the city of Bloomington. So, thanks, guys. Good to see you. The second item on tonight's agenda is the swearing in of new firefighters, and I see I see Chief Uli Seal coming forward. This is an exciting day for us here in the city for a number of different reasons, and it's the, it's the next big step forward in term of a, of a big plan that the city has in providing a, a fire department that better meets the needs of our, our community and, and better meets the needs of, of a city of ninety thousand, frankly. And so, very happy that, that we're to this point, very happy to see the next steps that we're gonna be taking as we make our way through additional hiring and additional new fire stations, and we're, we're very excited about it. So, Chief, good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Echo everything you said. In fact, you said everything I would say. No, very good, very good. That means I've done a good job messaging so far. So, I do have twenty people. They're gonna come up and kind of introduce themselves. They'll file up here in front and stack two or three deep. When we're done introducing everybody, we'll spread out, and Christina Scipione will swear them in. Because I have twenty, I'll forego the customary quiz at the end of the meeting to see if you actually remember any of their names. But like you, I'm very excited about this. As many of you know, we've struggled for some time with staffing issues. This is gonna be a real shot in the arm. They have gone through two weeks of training so far. They've got another two weeks of training, and they will start on shift May first. So, we're really looking forward to that and providing a better level of service to our citizens, so, and all our visitors. So with that, we're just gonna file them in.
Very good.
This is gonna be a bit of a...
Just go.
You can introduce yourself, yes.
Hi, I'm Aaron Gutzman. Been living in the city for over a decade, married, three kids, been a paramedic for fifteen years, and been with the department for about a year and a half, and excited for the opportunity to serve the city in a full-time manner.
Excited to have you, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Max Favor. I've been living in the city for almost eight years now. I was born in Santiago, Chile, and my family brought me and raised me to Apple Valley, Minnesota, but Bloomington, I was also drawn here because I had family here as well. So I look forward to my time serving with my new brothers and sisters on the fire department, some that I've already been with, as in the paid-on-call side, and I look forward to serving the community.
Welcome aboard, Max.
Thank you.
Chief Seal, can I ask you to adjust the mic a little bit so we, a little better... There you go, perfect.
Thanks, thanks, Chief. Thank you. Hi, my name is Mamie Roman, born and raised in Bloomington, been on the fire department on the paid-on-call side for going on five years, and just excited to be starting this whole new thing that we got going on, so, thanks.
Hi, my name is Mallory Vetter. I have been in Bloomington since two thousand and nineteen and joined the department in two thousand and twenty-one. I am a firefighter/paramedic, and just excited to continue my career. I started my career seventeen years ago at the Waterpark of America, have worked at Bush Lake, at the Mall of America, and so I'm excited just to continue my career here in Bloomington.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Robert Wedman. I'm brand-new to the city and brand-new to the fire department two weeks ago. I'm a transplant from Oregon with my wife Amy and my two kids, Arthur and Zoe, and I'm very happy to be here. Thank you very much.
We're happy to have you, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Simonis. I've lived in Bloomington for just over four years. I actually interviewed for City Council a couple of months ago, and it worked out better this way, so, happy that I'm here in one way or another. Just excited to get started full-time with the city of Bloomington.
Fewer fires on the fire department.
Exactly.
Glad to have you onboard, Ryan.
You're all right, take a breath.
Oh, I'm Justin Floresi. Been with BFD for, since two thousand and nineteen, and happy to be here and serve the city.
Hello, everybody. I'm Cody Middlestadt. I've been a firefighter here for six years, paid-on-call, three years St. Paul Fire full-time, and I'm excited to be full-time here and see what this career brings. Thank you.
Excited to have you, thank you, Cody.
Hello, I'm Jason Duke. Been with Bloomington, paid-on-call for ten years, and just feel grateful to be a part of this group that you let us assemble here for the city. Thank you.
Great to have you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Bezicky. Been on the paid-on-call side of things for a little over a year and a half now. Lived in Bloomington for six years and super excited to serve the community I live in.
Welcome aboard.
It's got his brother in the police department as well, so.
Hello, beautiful people. My name's Rodney Whalen. I served as a firefighter/paramedic for the city of Eau Claire for two years, and I'm new to Bloomington, and I look forward to serving the community and growing with you guys. Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, welcome to Bloomington. Glad to have you.
Mayor City Council, my name is Eric Peterson. Been a resident of Bloomington for fifteen years, had the pleasure of serving the city through the fire department for the last year and a half. Look forward to working with this talented bunch moving forward in a full-time role, so appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Good evening, Council. My name is Chris Kaufman. Not originally from Bloomington, but I've had the pleasure of living here for the last twenty-four years and raising a family, so I've had some time on the Bloomington Fire Department, paid-on-call side, and look forward to the next chapter of Bloomington Fire.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, Council. My name is Matthew Warren. Not originally from Bloomington, I'm one of the Wisconsin hires, and I'm very excited to be here for this opportunity, and I greatly appreciate it, so thank you.
We love luring people away from Wisconsin. We do.
Good evening, City Council, excuse me. Good evening, Council. I'm grateful to be here. My name's Leon Chambers. I've been on the paid-on-call side for approximately five years. This is a dream come true, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Good evening, Council. I'm Zach Randall. I've been a, I'm a Bloomington, born and raised here, been part of the paid-on-call side for the last six-plus years, and I'm grateful to have this opportunity to join the full-time career people and be a part of it. Thank you.
Glad to have you onboard, Zach.
Evening, everyone. John James, been part of the paid-on-call side for almost four years. You guys had the pleasure of hiring me last year in July as an inspector, so thanks for letting me transfer over. I'm excited for this opportunity, so thank you.
Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Ryan Paredes, lifelong resident of Bloomington, nine years with the fire department, and real excited to get this, this thing going, so thanks for having us.
Thank you, Ryan.
Former classmate of Mr. Lowman over here.
Yeah, let's talk later.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Joe Zinnell. I don't think I'm a former classmate of anyone on the council. I've been in Bloomington for about nine years, on the paid-on-call side for about seven years, and I'm very excited to be here. Thank you.
Glad to have you, welcome.
Hello, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm firefighter/paramedic Mark Russell. I've been a Bloomington resident for fifteen years, paid-on-call firefighter for the last nine, and just excited to serve the community in a full-time capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
So, one more quick thing. I gotta recognize my command staff over here, these other people in white shirts. They've done a really excellent job marshaling this many people and getting them through a hiring process, in large part to meet grant deadlines. And as you can hear, we pretty much hired everybody with experience. We've got a lot of people with experience, which has made our training curve a lot shorter and a lot easier, but it's still been a haul, and I'd just like to thank my command staff for all the work they've done with that. So, now I could have you guys file, file right up, around, all the way around, and the city clerk will come up and administer an oath of office.
And I will say what I always say when we do this for our police department, new police officers, to the family members, this is gonna happen once, so don't miss the shot. Do not be shy about standing up and getting into position. You're more than welcome to stand up, get to where you need to be to get a good shot of, of this happening. There you go. Be nice to each other, though. Go well, boy.
All right, please raise your right hand. Please state your first and last name, all of you at the same time. Thank you. Repeat after me. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the state of Minnesota
and the state of Minnesota.
and will faithfully discharge the duties
faithfully discharge the duties.
of a firefighter
of a firefighter.
for the city of Bloomington, Minnesota
for the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
to the best of my judgment and ability
to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Well, to all of our firefighters, I want to say welcome and thank you. Thank you for your commitment to Bloomington, for all of you who have moved from positions in Bloomington to this full-time position, congratulations, how wonderful. To those of you who are new to our department, welcome. Can't wait to make you part of our community, make you part of this Bloomington Fire family. And on behalf of the residents, thank you for the work that you have done and that you're gonna continue to do. We know how just so very important the work that you do is. The city of ninety thousand relies on you for so many things. We know so many things beyond putting out fires, which is, you know, it's in the job title, but we know there's so much more that you do, and for so many people, you're the face of this community. So, keep that in mind, and please continue to, to, to serve us, to, to do an outstanding job, and to keep yourself safe. Thank you all so very much. Well done, congratulations. Thank you. I'm shocked you're all not gonna stay for the rest of the council meeting, but I certainly understand, enjoy the reception, enjoy the evening of celebration. Well, that was very cool. That was great. We, we swore in our first full-time firefighters. How about that? That's a great thing, a great step forward for the city of Bloomington. That's great. And I am here because we have two items on our agenda now that are proclamations, and I wanted to come down and read. I did bring my tea with me because, as you can hear in my voice, I think all of the pollen and mold and everything else that popped up over the past week or so has landed fully in my chest and throat, so I apologize for that ahead of time. But we'll see if we can get through these with, without me taking a breath here in one way or another. Item two-point-three on our agenda is a proclamation regarding Arbor Day. Quick test here, when and where was the original Arbor Day celebrated in the United States? Anybody know? Other than, other than the person who wrote it, okay. Who knows it? It was celebrated in Nebraska, that is correct. Councilmember Nelson. April tenth, eighteen seventy-two in Nebraska, and it's now spread across all fifty states, obviously. This year marks the thirty-fifth year that Bloomington has achieved the Tree City USA designation, and we have a, a program, once again, to, to celebrate these anniversaries. We're hosting a tree sale via pre-order for residents. The event will be a, a delivery event, and our park maintenance staff have contacted the folks who've ordered trees to make arrangements for dropping them off. So, we're furthering the notion of Arbor Day by making sure we reforest our city in the best way that we can. Arbor Day, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas Arbor Day provides an opportunity to celebrate the importance of trees and forests to our economy, culture, history, and future of the state. And whereas trees are of great value, as they provide clean air and water, shade and energy savings, wildlife habitat, recreational opportunities, wood products and jobs, while also capturing and storing carbon from the atmosphere thereby offsetting greenhouse gas emissions. And whereas properly planting and caring for a diverse mix of trees makes community forests more resilient by minimizing the impacts of diseases, insects, and other stressors such as climate change, and providing long-term community and environmental benefits. And whereas thoughtfully choosing, planting, and caring for a diverse mix of trees now supports resilient communities into the future. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Buss, you do hereby proclaim Friday, May, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the city of Bloomington, dated the seventeenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-three. As I said, it's, Bloomington has a Tree City USA designation, and has for a number of years now, for more than three decades, and it's an important part of what we do, and it's an important part of the community that it is. And all it takes is seeing the last couple of days here, as the trees have started to bloom and, and seeing it, it come to life, back to life after a long winter, and the importance of the trees and the, the urban forest that we have here in Bloomington. So, thank you to our, our, our staff that cares for the trees, that cares for our urban forests, that deals with the, the ongoing challenges that come with that, including the Emerald Ash Bore, and I know that we, we still have some elms in town, but not very many, and, and all the challenges that come with it. So thank you so very much, and thank you to the residents who care for trees in, in your yard and, and across the city. So, thank you so much, and that's our Arbor Day proclamation for two thousand and twenty-three. Item two-point-four on our agenda is the second proclamation, this being for Volunteer Recognition Week. We actually just had a very nice volunteer recognition open house and ceremony this Saturday, this past Saturday, here at, here at Civic Plaza. Staff did an outstanding job pulling it all together and making it a very notable and very fun event despite the rainy weather, and we had a lot of people show up, and we had very good, we had very good feedback from residents, that it was an enjoyable time. It really was a good time just to be able to sit and talk to folks. We wanted to make sure that, excuse me, timeout, you just heard the squeak, give me a minute. We wanted to be sure that as we talked about volunteer appreciation, we talked about specific things within volunteer appreciation, and you'll hear it here in the proclamation. But one thing that I want to pull, call out in particular is Paul Smith here from Larkin Hoffman. Larkin Hoffman has done pro bono work on behalf of the city as part of our Just Deeds Project, which is a project to remove racial covenants off of deeds, the deed restrictions on far too many deeds within the city of Bloomington. Many residents don't even know they have them. Most don't know they have them, but they are still there, and they're a reminder of our painful past. Removing them, in, in effect, has no, no, no definite, you know, no definitive change to what, what a deed is, but the symbolic and the importance of that change, to make it clear that that is no longer part of who we are in the city of Bloomington, has an enormous impact. And I want to thank Paul and the folks at Larkin Hoffman for the work that they have done. I'm gonna invite you up, stand behind me if you could while I read the, the, the proclamation, then we're gonna let you, get you behind the microphone here for a couple of seconds as well, and we'll, of course, do the grip and grin because we've gotta do that as well. Proclamation for Volunteer Recognition Week, April sixteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas the city of Bloomington is committed to encouraging and enhancing volunteer service and has identified volunteerism as a strategic priority to make Bloomington a remarkable community. And whereas we all thrive when everyone participates, and we applaud the efforts of nonprofits, military members and veterans, service clubs, community groups, and faith-based organizations that have stepped forward to advance the city's mission and invite others to find their call to service. And whereas the city of Bloomington's volunteers are a robust group of approximately one thousand and come from all different walks of life with unique talents and skills. And whereas throughout this past year, we've seen police reserve officers donate hundreds of hours of service and assist at every large public event in the city. Professional lawyers provide pro bono work to remove discriminatory covenants from property titles. Conservationists clean up miles of invasive species in our parks. Needle workers contribute numerous handmade items, and holiday helpers wrap presents. And whereas volunteerism is a reinforcing cycle. Volunteers are more likely to become further involved in civic organizations, attend public meetings, and lend a helping hand to their neighbors. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Buss, you do hereby proclaim the week of April sixteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, as Volunteer Recognition Week in the city of Bloomington, dated the seventeenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-three. As I said, we have Paul, we have Paul Smith from Larkin Hoffman here. Paul, thank you so very much. Thank you for your firm's work regarding our racial covenant, work our just... Thank you for your firm's work regarding our racial covenant work, our just deeds work. It is greatly appreciated, it really is, and appreciate not only the, the, the hard work that goes into it, but the, the feeling, the thought that is in behind it as well. So thank you so very much, greatly appreciated.
Yeah, you know, this is a, a really important project and I'm, I'm really proud of the council for having the initiative to push this forward. It's, it's really, it's not necessarily me at our firm, but our real estate people, Jake, Jake Steen, Megan Rogers, who really spearheaded this for us and our whole real estate department. And while I know absolutely nothing about real estate, I know that there's a lot left to do in this area and the one thing I can do is twist the arm of my brethren in the, the Bloomington legal community and see if we can't pick up the pace on this and, and get a whole lot more of these deeds corrected. So thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you so very much for the work that your firm does and all that you've done in Bloomington. Greatly appreciated. Next up on our agenda is item three, our consent business. Councilmember Martin has our consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. As of now, I have holds from Councilmember Lowman on 3.15, 18, and 20. And then Mayor Bussie requested a hold on 3.21. Is there any that I missed? Okay, so that being said, let's get my agenda numbers up in front of me here. I will motion for approval of items 3.1 through 3.14, 3.16, and 17, 3.19.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to accept the, the consent agenda tonight as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 5-0. Councilmember Martin?
First one was 3.15, Councilmember Lowman.
Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a, it's an order, storm sewer maintenance project that is in my district. There was a kind of last-minute email earlier today requesting that we hold this. I'm not requesting that we hold this, I'm just wondering if there is any way in which that staff would be open, or my colleagues would be open to some of the requests that these residents have. I guess it's a group in the amount of around 20, 20 folks and they wanted to just, they had made contact with staff, they didn't know it was going to be on the agenda today. And they have some plantings that are there and some other, some recommendations they would like to give to staff. And I wonder if it's, if staff would be open to taking some of those recommendations. I don't want to slow down the, the project at all, but I want to make sure that, you know, part of being a remarkable community is making sure we're taking public input and that type of thing. So I don't know if, if we need to, you know, talk about it in any detail, if, if there's agreement here that we'd be okay to just kind of have a agreement here that...
What I, what I, thank you, Councilmember. What I think would be helpful, if we get a bit more context around this, maybe if, Carl Keel, if you could come forward, Mr. Keel, and give us a bit more context and, and your input, your thoughts on, on the, the email that I think we all received late in the afternoon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have to admit that I did not review the details of that email. I saw that they had a number of suggestions. Would say that this project is kind of a conglomeration of basic maintenance items that we have throughout our system. The work that's proposed at Winchester Pond as part of this contract is merely replacing an existing corrugated pipe that has, has failed. So it is a fairly simple, from a, from a scope point of view, a replacement of a pipe. I did, seeing the email, there was a number of things that were well beyond that scope that were requested be wrapped into this project. Those are probably beyond the scope of this project. But short of that, I think we can certainly commit to reviewing those items in detail and to consider those that make sense. Would note that this will come back to you for an additional approval on May 8th and that would be another time if you're not satisfied with our, our efforts with regard to this, you could certainly flag us at that point.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to note that the request was specifically that they're not asking for the city to refrain from necessary projects, but rather asking to simply work with them. And it sounds like this will come back and if we have city's agreement that they'll work with them before it comes back. I think that's probably all we need to their request and to Councilmember Lowman's request.
We can do that, just so we set expectations is we may not have as broad a scope as some of the neighbors would like us to, to apply, but we'll certainly listen to consider them.
I, I for one, Mayor, if I, if I might...
Please.
Thank you. Keep the scope to what the scope is.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would agree with that and I would agree with the notion of, of working with the neighbors and, and continuing that conversation, understanding that the conversation might not always be fully in agreement, but at least we can continue the conversation and, and look for ways that, that you would be in agreement, in different ways that you could find agreement on different things.
We can, we can, we can agree to that.
Well, Mayor, with, with that stated, I don't think we need to put anything else in there. I think, you know, I trust staff to be able to, to carry through with that. I'm happy to make the motion.
Councilmember Lowman?
Mayor, I'm happy to move to order the 2023 901 Storm Sewer Maintenance Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Martin to accept item 3.15 on our consent business this evening. No further council discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 5-0. I'm sorry, Councilmember Martin, what was the next one?
3.18 from Councilmember Lowman.
Councilmember Lowman, 3.18.
Thank you, Mayor. This is 318, acknowledgment of liquor tax penalty and interest abatement, Nine Mile Brewing Company. I would like to simply abstain from this due to some conflicts, so that's really all I want to do. If we want to go ahead and if somebody else wanted to move this, that's all I wanted to be able to do with this.
Very good. And I'm, I'm assuming we don't necessarily need five votes on this one, four votes would suffice, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that is correct.
Very good. Councilmember Martin?
I'm happy to make that motion. I will move that we acknowledge receipt of the report requesting penalties and interest abatement of the Nine Mile Brewing Company.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Dalisandro to accept item 3.18 on our consent agenda. No further discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed and abstained? So motion carries 4-0 with an abstention by Councilmember Lowman. And then the final item is 3.21 on our agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more. I'm sorry, 3.20. Councilmember Lowman?
I'll, I'll be as quick as possible. This, this is a resolution for no mow May. Well, can't say that appropriately here. And I had sent in some questions and hopefully council had the opportunity to look into them. I'm not looking to hold this up because my, my fear is, just the questions I had in brief were, you know, one, how is the enforcement going to work amongst, you know, different zoning districts to get clarification on that? I had also asked if there had been a racial impact statement done with this particular piece. I do know that this has been a process by which, that, that folks have been harassed and so I wanted to see if we could get a, a, a review of that. And I'm trying to think of what the other, other piece that I had that was a part of that piece. But I, I think that, you know, as we're working through this, you know, this is, you know, any, any type of change in policy and that type of thing, I, I know what the other piece was, it was how, how was the process here to, to bring this forward. But I think as we're working towards this, we're, we're just really looking to try to, I think, improve this process as we go forward. So my recommendation is if, you know, if folks are open to it, that as we do this next year, that we kind of do that and make sure that the enforcement is, you know, we, we improve our, our resolution and make sure that it looks better next year. So with that being said, unless somebody else feels strongly that we need to take action on any of the things that I mentioned, I'd be happy to make that motion today.
Councilmember Nelson, input?
Thank you, Mayor. I gotta be honest, I'm a little bit skeptical of no mow May, given two reasons. One, if you don't mow your lawn, you get 30 days to mow it, so you're already into the next month, so there's not really an enforcement mechanism as it stands now. Second, this is to my knowledge about pollinators and I don't have any idea, I'm, I'm the worst gardener you'll ever meet. And I don't know how much pollen there is in our normal lawns. I think there are other things to do and, you know, if we do no mow May or we don't, you know, whatever, I guess in, in my mind, because the enforcement mechanism comes the next month. But I think there are better tools for both the city on its properties, for residents and businesses on its properties to put into place. And I know our Sustainability Commission is, you know, it does a lot. And I would love to see this at some point on their work plan, 2040, 2024, not 2045, 2024, yeah, well, 2045, 2050, it'd be fine. You know, at, at some point in the future, take a, a serious, honest look at what we do about pollinators. I think it's a legitimate issue. I don't know that, in my opinion, from some of the information I've seen, that growing grass and not mowing it is the right solution. You know, I think from some of the stuff I've seen, you, you do that, you, you hurt the grass's ability to be tolerant to hot weather, lack of rain, things of that nature. Whereas if you plant the right stuff that pollinates with flowers, you can do better things. And, you know, I, I do a lot of work in terms of residential stuff and, you know, people like yards, but I'm not sure sod in our yards is, from an environmental standpoint, the most ideal thing to have. It works great on soccer fields and football fields and softball and whatever, but, you know, I'm not sure it's the right product always for, I just, okay, I've talked a long enough. I think there are better solutions and I'm not against no mow May, I just don't, I, I'm just not entirely convinced it's the best solution. And I, I think there are better solutions and I would love the city to look at better solutions as we go forward. That was really long, I apologize.
Councilmember Lowman?
You know, thank you, Mayor. And my, my colleague, I tend, tend to agree with you. However, you know, I, I did write a, write an notice to, one of, one of my residents was out there. And I think there's, there's, I think the spirit of what we talked about in, in March was this idea of awareness, you know, just even this idea, this conversation we're having right now, we're having awareness right here. And, you know, as, as much as I, you know, I, I totally agree with you, you know, in terms of the, the, the application of it and the practicality of it all. But sometimes, you know, we do things from an environmental standpoint and it pains me to, to want to support this in that regard. But I think there's, we can't discount awareness. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this today. I do think we ought to do, as you've said, put this on the work plan, have a look at this. I would prefer, you know, turf grass and those types of things that take some time. But, you know, hey, this is the first step and I do, I'm very concerned about the enforcement piece of it. And so this, this also provides that, that protection for folks who want to go out and do this and that there's not, no ambiguity with that. And so with that being said, I, I, you know, I totally agree with you, my, my colleague, but I, I think this is the right step for us to take today with this particular proposal. And I'm happy to, to make this motion unless the person who originally brought this to us wants to take that on. I think that's Councilmember Dalisandro. I thought it was you.
No, it was Councilmember Carter.
Was it Carter? Oh, she's not here.
No, that's okay.
All right, well then, I'll do it.
I mean, I can...
Be happy, be happy to move to support no mow May.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Martin to accept 3.20, 320 on our consent agenda this evening. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-1 with Councilmember Nelson in opposition. Now item 3.21, which is a revised resolution in support for Polar Semiconductors, their applications through, through deed. I am going to recuse myself from this because of my professional association with one of the, one of Polar's competitors. And so I will turn the gavel figuratively over to Councilmember Nelson. As we did last time, I, I'm not going to step away. If there's discussion on this and if it's a back and forth, I will step away, but if it's, if this is a simple vote, I'm just going to let Councilmember Nelson deal with this and take care of this and then we'll move back and move right on to our, the rest of our agenda. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, former mayor. I, I was hoping for the gavel, to be honest. So any discussion? Hearing none, I would look for a motion for item 3.21.
Current mayor, I'm happy to make that motion. I will move that we adopt, oh, let's see here, I will move that we adopt a resolution regarding the authorization of a Minnesota investment fund and a job creation fund application for polar semiconductor.
All right, we had a motion from Councilmember Martin and a second from Councilmember Dalisandro. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we have four in favor and zero opposed. It passes and I will reluctantly give back control to the mayor.
Thank you, former Mayor Nelson, I appreciate it. Former Acting Mayor Nelson. And thank you, Councilmember Martin, for the consent agenda this evening. We'll move on to our public hearings this evening and we have two public hearings. The first is a item 4.1. It's a public hearing to approve our 2023-24 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Budget. Erica Nelson, our HRA director, Erica Coleman, Erica Coleman, I'm sorry. Our HRA director is here to present this this evening. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me this evening. So I have a brief presentation that I can go through the information for you and then I can be open for any questions or comments, but this is a public hearing as well. Okay, so this is the Community Development Block Grant for our 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan. Just to ground us, Bloomington has been an entitlement community since 1988. That means we get an annual allocation of grant funds directly from HUD. We are also a part of the Hennepin County Consortium for Federal Home Dollars. A part of that consortium is Bloomington, the cities of Bloomington, Eden Prairie, Plymouth, and then the urban county of Hennepin County. Elder activities that we do use the funds for to serve low and moderate income households. And the purposes are to preserve the city's housing stock, to provide affordable housing options, to provide essential services. And those essential services are for youth, seniors, and families and/or individuals. Just want to note, the reason families is used is because that is HUD language. That is not exclusion, excluding anyone, but that is HUD language to use families. We support fair housing activities. We are a part of the Regional Fair Housing Implementation Council, better known as the FIC, and Program Administration Funds. So just the timeline of the action steps. On March 28th, the HRA Board did review this, this request here and recommend approval. Tonight, we have our City Council Public Hearing and Approval. On the 22nd, it is the end of the city public comment period. This item is currently open for public comment period, which comments can be accepted by email, by mail, or in person. April 25th is the Hennepin County Board Public Hearing. As I mentioned, we are part of the Hennepin County Consortium for Home. Therefore, our annual action plan is included when Hennepin County presents to their board, when they have their public hearing, and when they have their public comment period. May 2nd will be the end of the Hennepin County Public Comment Period and this whole packet, ours, Eden Prairie, Plymouth, and Hennepin County, will be submitted to HUD on May 17th. Pending HUD approval, which is basically if we don't hear from HUD, it is approved, July 1st will be the beginning of the 2023 program year. So 2023 program year, it runs July 1st from 2023 through June 30th, 2024. The estimated budget is $2,146,227. How did we get to that amount? Well, on February 2nd of this year, HUD did notify us of what our program year allocation will be, so that is $456,726. We do have currently $675,843 in program income. Program income are repayments from our single-family homeowner rehabilitation loan program. Mind you, these loans are deferred for 30 to 40 years. So we are receiving payments from loans that were done in the late 80s and the 90s and we have received higher amounts in program years 19, 20, and 21, aligning with the market. So when a lot of homes were selling, when prices went up, we were seeing... So when a lot of homes were selling, when prices went up, we were seeing repayments on those outstanding loans. We have $613,658 in prior year carryover estimate. The reason this is estimated is because funds are still being spent in the current program year, but where do these funds come from? These funds come from us allocating funding to our, our single-family homeowner rehabilitation loan program. However, we are required to spend program income funds first. Therefore, since we've seen a higher number of repayments, we have not been able to touch the allocation that we did every year. And then lastly, we are required to estimate how much program income we will get in the year to come, and we've estimated at $400,000. We usually estimate it between $400,000 and $500,000. And so again, these will be repayments from the homeowner rehabilitation loan program. So I thought I'd provide a bar graph, or excuse me, a pie chart, to better understand where this money is being allocated. For the total amount of $2,146,227, it is broken up through all the proposed activities. Homeowner rehabilitation assistance, that is the largest piece of the pie, at $792,191. Reason for that is because we are using the funding that was carried over from the program income that we have received of the over $600,000, and then estimated over $100,000 of the current program income to come in. The next one is yellow. It's Develop Homes for Homeownership. This is the program that we have historically provided up to $75,000 to purchase and rehabilitate at least two homes a year for sale to a income-qualified home buyer. We are doing three homes this year instead of two, so we can increase that. The next one will be Develop or Rehab Affordable Rental Property. This is $413,658. The reason for this is that we do have rental property in the city that is in programs for affordability, that we will use the funds to make sure that the properties align with the priorities of the city where it comes to energy efficiency, but also showing our other homeowners and residents in the city of Bloomington, what does it take and how do we go about that in making sure we upgrade and keep our properties up to standard. Next, we have Acquisition and or Demolition and Clearance at $524,033. This is for acquiring either land and/or property that has a structure on it that could be rehabilitated or may need to be torn down. But either way, the end result is for development and/or redevelopment of affordable homeownership. So that would be to an income, a end buyer at 80% AMI or below. Second to last is Public Service. Public Service encompasses our senior services, youth counseling, as well as, yeah, senior services and youth counseling, excuse me. So this is when we specifically offer services to local nonprofits, excuse me, funding to local nonprofits for the services they provide for specific populations. And then lastly is Administration and Planning. So this is $91,345. This goes towards time for managing the program, but then also the Fair Housing Implementation Council, our fair housing activities. That is considered an administrative activity through HUD. And so that's what makes up the whole $2,146,227. And what I carved out was the 2023 entitlement allocation. So specifically, where is the funding that is directly coming from HUD for our 2023 program year going? And that is being broken up between, it is taking out our homeowner rehabilitation assistance, we do not need to put more money in there from our grant, and it is also taking out acquisition and/or demolition and clearance, because we have enough funds to be able to buy a few properties if we need to, and then clear. So, as I said, we are currently open for public comment. So we have a 30-day public comment period that started March 23rd and goes through April 22nd. Today is our public hearing where we can take public comments as well. Email, mail, or in person, people may submit public comment. The notice of the comment period and the hearing did go out on our city public notice webpage, on the CDBG webpage, in the HRA newsletter that people have subscribed to, and in the Sun Current on both March 6th, March 30th, and April 6th. Also, our plan has been advertised, open for public comment period with Hennepin County's 30-day public comment period, which started April 3rd and goes through May 2nd. And then the Hennepin County Board will have their public hearing on April 25th at 1:30 PM. With that, this is a public hearing, and I do have a suggested motion, but I can take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. I do have a question. The 792,000 in the homeownership rehabilitation, do we typically get that level of applications for, for homeownership rehabilitation?
We typically do get that level of applications. We have historically provided between 550 to about 680,000 a year in our rehabilitation loan program. But last year, we did increase the funding amount from a maximum of 35,000 to 40,000 plus $10,000 of accessibility. So it's a maximum of $50,000. And currently, staff is reviewing on if that should be increased due to the cost of materials and labor at this point.
Okay, so, so that, even though it seems higher, it's probably in the ballpark of what we're looking for.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Hi, Ms. Coleman, thanks for being with us again. Would you mind going back to the pie charts? I just want to make sure I'm reading the numbers correctly here. So the estimated budget is the total amount you're hoping to spend in 2023, and the 2023 entitlement allocation is the funds to be entitled by the block grant that you'll apply to that budget. Do I have that correct?
You have that correct. The $456,726 is a part of
Right.
The $2,146,000.
Wonderful, that's all I needed, is a clarification on that, thank you.
Council, additional questions? No additional questions? Thank you very much. We will open this public hearing, item 4.1. This is a public hearing regarding the approval of the 2023-2024 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Budget for the city of Bloomington. Anyone in the council chambers wishes to speak on item 4.1? Mike, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, no one on the phone.
Last call for anyone in the chambers? Council, no one in the chambers coming forward, no one on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Loman to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0, closing the public hearing. Council, any questions on this? Anything additional we need to hear? Councilmember Loman?
Not, not really looking for necessarily an answer for this, but, you know, I noticed in that pie graph that there's, you know, that yellow portion for homeownership and development. How do we sustain that from an ongoing basis? I know the loan program, we, you know, that, that, those funds obviously continue to stay in there. What's the, the method by which that we're able to sustain that and grow that over time?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, Council. That's a great question. So like I mentioned, we've been an entitlement city since 1988, and as you have been a part of this council, you have seen where you have approved to increase that amount for that activity. Historically, that activity has been with West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, doing business as homes within reach. We have updated the information so that we are not just tying that to them, we are still supporting them, but if there are other mission-based organizations that buy and rehabilitate property and meet the needs, that they can do so using these funds. But also how it's sustained is as a part of the HRA's mission. And so the HRA still can use funds as it has before, and it still can continue to provide for these opportunities. Case in point, there is a development that was done between the HRA and Project for Pride and Living that was $80,000 per property, and there was eight of those properties. And so that's how we sustain it, is that we work with the HRA and through the HRA to fulfill the mission and fulfill the objectives of the city.
And so those are, those are one-time expenses, though, that, you know, like the loan program, the money cycles back in. So this wouldn't cycle back in. We're talking about just taking taxpayers' dollars, or if we get from HUD and, you know, and putting it, putting it in there, right? So I guess that's more sort of my question, and again, not, we're not solving this today, but that's kind of the policy question. Is there a way for us to, you know, like we have the loan program, to have it, you know, self-fulfilling? Are there other models that are out there across the country that, that have ways in which that they can kind of have that, that money continue to come in there and grow like we have our loan program? Or maybe there's something we could take out of the loan program and, you know, put it in there. So I guess that's kind of, you know, so if there's any other, you know, because I just love to see that grow and get to that size with our, with our loan program, to really stabilize that, that ownership piece.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, councilmembers. So to answer your question, one, we don't want to see these grow and get to this piece because there is a requirement to spend the money down within a certain timeframe by HUD. So what you're looking at today is just the federal funds of CDBG. The HRA has other funds for money that has gone out for acquisition, loans, different things that has come back that we can use that activity. Two, for this activity in particular, that has historically been with West Hennepin Affordable Housing Land Trust, they go towards perpetual affordability. And one of the things about perpetual affordability is that you do want to limit how many loans you are putting on that property, because you are looking at providing affordability in perpetuity for people that are 80% AMI or below, but really a focus of 50% AMI or below. And so the way that that comes back is that through the land trust model, there is an equity sharing split. And so when the home is sold, the seller splits the net proceeds, so the equity sharing, they split the net proceeds so that another buyer coming behind them, who is under 80% AMI, again, targeted at 50% AMI, is able to afford that property without more funds going into that property from other sources, whether local, state, or federal. So yes, and we can do that, it just would not be in this funding source, yes.
And so in the, the fund, now you've raised more questions from here, if you don't mind, Mayor. Yeah, danger, right? And so, and so in that fund, what does that look like? I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought this was that, that fund, so I've been schooled here. And I'm, and I'm okay with that. What, what does that fund look like that we have in there? And, and, you know, since I don't have that right in front of me, and, and what is the, the plan in terms of our, our growth with that, so that I understand that? Because that's where I want to put my energy, in terms of making sure that, that grows over time, and that we're able to do that and shrink the amount that we're, we're putting into rental properties.
So thank you for that question, Mayor, Councilmember Loman, councilmembers. So, one, as I have mentioned about the funding that we have in terms of the program income for CDBG alone, and I've shown you how we're breaking that up between the $2,146,227. Part of those loan program income, part of that receipt, is going to fund further properties and further single-family development of affordable homeownership. So that's number one. The fund that I was talking about and that you're mentioning is HRA funds. And so because the HRA has existed for some time and has done different programs, there is funding through our neighborhood fund to provide for different opportunities that enhance and encourage neighborhood redevelopment, whereas affordable homeownership would be one of those activities. So it's an HRA fund.
So, and, and, and thank you for clarifying that, but what's the number on, on that?
I can get back to you about what that number is.
I appreciate that.
We do have funds allocated right now for 2023.
Yeah, because I just, that's really where, where my point is, is that I'm just trying to, you know, make sure that, you know, I see that number there, you know, for, for loans, we want people to improve their homes. But we also want folks to be able to purchase homes and live in the city and, and not just renting it over time. So I appreciate that, and we can get that off line.
Let me just add, this is just one program.
Yeah, no, no, I know this is not everything. No, I do know that.
Okay, so we do have down payment assistance that the city council did approve through American Rescue Plan Act dollars. We do have the neighborhood loan, we do have the neighborhood fund that the HRA does use for a various range of activities. We do have our development fund, in which we do use for single-family development. And then the HRA is managing the right-of-way acquisition loan fund lots that we will be looking at seeing more development on, that this body did approve for the HRA to manage and for Habitat for Humanity to look at building affordable homeownership.
Be great to get all those in one, one, one big number, so I know what to, what to ask, so.
Council, any additional questions? There are no questions? I would look for action on this.
Happy to make that motion.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
All right. I'm going to move that we approve the 2023-2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan and Budget for submission and execution of related documents for program administration.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Loman, to approve our 2023-24 CDBG Annual Action Plan and Budget for, for submission and execution of related documents and program administration. No further council discussion on this?
No.
If not, council, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. And we look forward to see, seeing more on this. We'll move to item 4.2 on our agenda, our second and the final public hearing of the evening, this regarding our ordinance regarding ranked choice voting. Our city clerk, Ms. Cipione is here to lead us through this and tee this up and set this up for us. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm back. Nice to see you all this evening. Today, we have an ordinance before you regarding ranked choice voting, so if you go to the next slide. Thank you. As a little reminder for everybody here and those who may be watching from home, on February 27th, that was before the city council, and we discussed some lessons learned regarding our ranked choice voting from our 2021 election. And then we talked about some potential challenges and changes to our ordinance for the upcoming 2023 election. And so at that meeting, he really wants me to move this along, huh? At that meeting, the city council provided direction to prepare an ordinance that did two things, decreased the number of candidate rankings from six to three, and then required write-ins to register. And so I'll go through and discuss a little history on both of those, just to jog everybody's memory. But before we start that, just a reminder of what we are looking at for 2023. So we have all of our city council on the ballot in 2023, which means that all voters will have a mayor, a council member at large, a council member at large special election, and a district council member. So the, all voters will see four RCB races on their ballot. In addition, we have school board elect up to three, and then up to three local option sales tax questions, which will appear on all voters' ballots as well. We are anticipating a significant turnout, given the number of races on the ballot. So we're anticipating about 40% compared to about 26% in 2021. And that equals about 21,000, almost 22,000 ballots cast compared to 15,504 ballots cast in 2021. So with that in mind, we take a look at our first change, which is decreasing the number of rankings. So we can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. So currently, our number of rankings is the number of candidates who have filed for that office up to six. The recommended change is to decrease that number for the, that it, so that it equals the number of candidates up to three. And if we go to the next slide, we can talk about why that is. So our voting equipment currently allows for up to three columns across the ballot. So if more than three candidates file for office currently with six ranking, up to six rankings, that adds a whole nother line, or a whole nother row to the ballot. So it kind of almost doubles the space that that race takes up on our ballot. And state law requires that our ballots be on one piece of paper. Front and back, we get one piece of 11-inch paper to, to put all of our races on. So depending on the number of candidates that file, and given that we have four RCB races on every ballot, ballot layout could be quite a challenge if we receive a high number of candidate filings this year. And so if you switch to the next slide, so this is an example, and I know it's hard to see, but we had Hennepin County mock up a ballot for us with a significant, significant number of candidate rankings in each race, and to show you what it would look like if we still had the up to six. And on those first two pages that you see there, the black bars kind of indicate where a new race starts. So you can see the significant amount So you can see the significant amount of room that we take up when we have more than three rankings per race. And then you see it bleeds over into a third page where we have the school district and we have the potential three city questions as well. So we then asked Hennepin County to mock up the same number of candidate rankings, or excuse me, same number of candidate filings with up to three rankings. And you can see that we're able to fit our RCV races on one side of the ballot, have space on the backside of the ballot for the school board and any city questions, and that gives us a little wiggle room as well. There's a whole separate column that's empty. You know, if we get even more filings than this, we would be able to kind of still have space on the backside of the ballot for potentially one RCV race on the back, if we can't fit all four on the front. So that's the main impetus for this change. It's just a logistical problem of making sure we fit everything on the ballot. The next change that we recommend is registered write-ins. And so currently, all of our municipal write-ins must be tabulated or counted. And that really slows down our counting process, especially when we are conducting a ranked choice voting tabulation rounds. And it did cause some confusion in 2021. And this is an example of tabulation rounds from, I believe, our at-large race in 2021. And so the candidates whose names were printed on the ballot are the three lines up at the top, and then everything else is write-ins. And you can see some write-ins started in the first round, and then were eliminated before the second, and then some were added in the second round. And so what happened is, in our tabulation center and via phone and email, I would get phone calls, where are all these extra people coming from? And why were they eliminated in the first, and now we have new ones in the second? And logistically, when we're tabulating, we have to keep track of in the second round who we've already eliminated in the first, and who is a new candidate. And we can do that, but it does make it more time consuming to do that process. And we did find that it caused some confusion for our voters and for our public who are trying to read our tabulation results. And so the recommendation is requiring a writing candidate to register. And so what that looks like on the next page is if a candidate is right, is running as a writing candidate, they register with our office at least seven days before the election. And then any write-in, registered write-ins, we count their votes just like we do every other candidate. And then the results has, the results report has one line for all of the other write-ins that weren't for that particular registered candidate. State law allows charter cities to do this, and all of the other RCV cities in Minnesota do require registered write-ins. And the reason, one of the reasons we didn't do this in Bloomington in 2021, I understand, is that there was some ambiguity in our charter language. And so a 2021 charter amendment can remove that ambiguity to pave the way for us to allow us to make this change now in 2023. So our next steps for this evening, our ordinance consideration in a public hearing. And then this spring, we as staff will draft our adminis, updated administrative rules. You'll remember that on February 27th, we also discussed doing spreadsheet tabulation versus the in-person tabulation, given the number of races that we have on the ballot. And so that's actually managed in the administrative rules. So I will come back with that update and lay out what that process looks like. This summer, then we will come back and provide those to the council. Candidate filing period is August 1st through the 15th, and then September 22nd, circle it on your calendar, that is the first day that in-person early voting or absentee voting begins. And then November 7th, of course, is election day. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cipione. Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Lohman.
We had talked about this at our last meeting, so I just want to go through this very quickly with respect to the, the ballots going down to the three columns. If I, as a recall, that you said during that period of time, there's no way to shrink that space that's there. It's kind of a template. It's kind of locked in. There's no way to eliminate the black bar. It's kind of, there isn't any other way to, to, to add additional columns or to make that work, right? I mean, you can't shrink the size of the, the text. You can't move the bars around. I just, I know we talked about that, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear. Am I representing that the correct way?
Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, that is correct. And I did have meetings with Hennepin County, who handles our ballot layout, to see if there were any creative options for us. And they, there really aren't. We're pretty limited in what the software can do, and we're limited in those three columns across the ballot.
Counsel, additional questions? All right, very good. Thank you. Item 4.2 is a public hearing. We open the public hearing on this now. This is regarding our ranked choice of voting ordinance for the city of Bloomington. Is there anyone in the council who wishes to speak to this? Don't be shy. Mr. Clark, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is David Clark. I'm the Executive Director of Residents for Better Bloomington. We're a watchdog group here in Bloomington. We watch what's happening at the city council. And ranked choice voting is one of the things that we watch very closely, as you are aware. I'm here to speak in opposition of the changes to the, the ordinance. You know, when this, when this whole concept of ranked choice voting was starting to be sold to the people of Bloomington a few years ago, and it was sold, it was sold with a group called Fair Vote Minnesota, funded by out-of-state billionaires, with a marketing campaign of about $200,000. It was sold to Bloomington. It's something that's going to do several things. And one of the things is to increase voter choice, to give people more options. And this does the exact opposite of that. It reduces voter options. And I understand the logistics of the ballot, and maybe some things just can't go on the ballot this year, if it's going to make way for candidates. But it seems to me that, you know, maybe you don't really want a lot of choices on the ballot. And I'm not just saying that out of the blue, or because that's an assumption that can be made from this proposal. In the last election, we just have to observe in the last city council election, after all the hype and the talk and the marketing and the use of city resources to advertise lots of choices, how many folks did you run in each of your races? One. One in District 3, one in District 4, and one for at-large, Nathan Coulter. So it doesn't seem to me like you're interested in having a lot of choices on the ballot anyway. And so why even have ranked choice voting in Bloomington if we're going to reduce the number of choices? Because that was one of the main points that was sold to us, was we're going to have more choices, right? We're going to have all these candidates that no longer have barriers to entry. They're not going to have to go out and raise money. They're not going to have to go through a vetting process, which is normally done in the primary system. Anybody can run. And yet this is going to reduce the voter choices from six to three, which goes against and invalidates one of the main reasons that you brought ranked choice voting to Bloomington in the first place. You know, it's, the, the arguments for ranked choice voting have been largely debunked. In fact, there is a study at the Humphrey Institute, which is one of the most respected institutions at the University of Minnesota.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to caution you here, make sure that we talk about the ordinance in front of us.
Correct. And that has to do with that.
Okay.
Has to do with that. I'm talking about the fact that one of the main arguments for ranked choice voting is expanded choice. And this, this proposal reduces that choice, for whatever reason. You're saying it's real estate on the ballot. I'm saying that no matter what the case is, you're reducing, reducing voter choice.
And that point has been made. I understand that point. Yes.
Right. And so before you, you have a copy of the Humphrey Institute study that has debunked other points that the proponents of ranked choice voting would put before us, and, and this is one of them as well, that it increases voter choice. In fact, it, it reduces voter choice. So I'm here to speak on behalf of myself, obviously, our organization, Residents for Better Bloomington, the 4,000 people that signed the petition to get, to put ranked choice voting back on the ballot this fall. I'm here to speak on their behalf, and that, you know, this goes against one of the main reasons that you sold this to us a couple of years ago, and this was implemented in Bloomington, which is to expand voter choice. So if you want to expand voter choice, leave it the way it is. Don't change it. And, you know, don't use a reason like real estate on a ballot as a reason to reduce voter choice. Stick to what you originally sold this, this to, which was this can expand voter choice and, and give people more options. So that's, that's my message this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Anyone else in the chamber who's wishing to speak on tonight's ordinance, proposed ordinance? Mr. Sable, is there anyone on the line?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, no one on the line.
Anyone wishing to speak? Counsel, I don't see anyone else coming forward. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Nelson, to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Counsel, questions, discussion on this? I have a question. Ms. Cipione, if you could. To Mr. Clark's questions, will any of the changes in the proposed ordinance restrict the number of candidates that will be, that could possibly be on the ballot?
Mayor and city council, this, these changes do not restrict the number of candidates that can file for office.
So any number of candidates could be on the ballot, so there could be practically a number of different choices on the ballot for any number of voters in the city of Bloomington.
Mayor and city council, that is correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Does the city or the city council run candidates, as was claimed by Mr. Clark?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, candidates come to the city clerk's office during the two-week candidate filing period and file individual paperwork with my office to put their name on the ballot. That is the process by which people's names appear on our ballots.
And then a follow-up question. Are those people vetted through a primary system that includes the parties?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, we do not have any party affiliations on our local races. And so I, I am not privy to any sort of party process that occurs, but I'm not aware of any, any vetting. We certainly don't have a partisan primary like you would see for the state races and the federal races, where you have columns with parties that the voter has to stay within that column. So we do not have that process for our local elections here in Bloomington.
Okay. And then this was voted on by the people of Bloomington as opposed to being sold in any type of manner. It was voted on by the residents of Bloomington. And what was on the ballot at that time? Was it a specific number of candidates? Was it a conceptual that ranked choice voting is what they were choosing? Or was, how detailed was the question that they voted on, and what did they vote on when they approved this?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, now, a little disclaimer, I wasn't here in 2020 when that election occurred, but the timeline is that voters approved a charter amendment in the November 2020 election, and the RCV ordinance, which set the number of candidate rankings, was approved in spring of 2021.
Okay. And then the last question I have, the, the, there are two parts to this, the number of candidates, and then there is the, sorry, my computer went down. The second part of it was the, other part of it.
The write-ins?
The write-in, yes, thank you. I knew someone would help me out and say, the write-ins has nothing to do with ranked choice voting, in my mind. That, that has, that could apply to a primary system, because we've had writing candidates in the past in the primary system. That could apply to anything. So that's irrespective of ranked choice voting. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, that is correct. Cities, charter cities under state statute are allowed to require registration of write-ins. So that is something that is available to any charter city, not just RCV cities.
Okay. So, and to my understanding, that, that means we don't have to count Mickey Mouse and Donald Duck and Shawn Nelson and stuff like that. So equally qualified candidates. So, thank you. I appreciate the clarification of what we're looking at.
Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Martin, Councilmember D'Alessandro, Councilmember Lohman, Councilmember Rayton.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just, just briefly, general thoughts. As far as I recollect, when we were talking about the number of candidates, or moving up to six, initially, it was with the assumption that we were going to conduct an election with it, get the community familiar with, with how to utilize it, and then take a look at what the appropriate number was going to be moving forward, whether we leave it where it is, whether we go with three. I know at the time, it was presented, the vast majority of elections end up having three being about the right number for the system. So I'm just glad we're doing what we said we were going to do a year ago. And beyond that, I'm just glad to see that residents have been utilizing it at about the number that's being proposed now. I think I had about that many folks running in District 4. We all sat up here and debated and discussed, and it seemed like this would have worked perfectly in that situation. And, and just beyond that, kind of at the gut level, I just appreciate the staff at the city did an incredible job in the first RCV election, demonstrating in a very transparent way how the conclusion of the election was reached. And I heard from folks across the community that they trusted that process. And from an election integrity perspective, I think it's critical that we move into this election, knowing we've got a ballot that's going to function, and that people can trust, and that people can rely on, on getting accurate results out of. So in the interest of election integrity, I look forward to these changes.
Councilmember D'Alessandro.
Yeah, just another comment on that, related, right? So when we do ranked choice voting, whether we have six or we have three, we have three, sorry, six times or three times as many options we have to rank candidates than we did if we only had one versus one, which is what we had in our, once we went through a primary system, right? So I still think that if we move from six to three, per purposes of, of making sure that we can get this ballot through the system and, and tracked appropriately and, and everything else, that we're, we're fulfilling the promise of what we're trying to accomplish here, which is to give people more choice. Because even at three, three is greater than one by a lot. So I feel pretty good about it, and I'm glad we're doing this. I also would say that I think the write-in thing is valuable as a secondary to the, the changes to the RCV stuff, because it is, I believe that, you know, there are some things around election integrity that can oftentimes get confused when you have people who, you know, may not spell, for example, my last name correctly, which, you know, most people don't. And so, you know, then, then you have to, then you get into situations where, you know, you have to worry about that, and you don't necessarily have a master, if you will, from the registration, to say, okay, this is the person that we're talking about, you know, managing the account for, for, for example. So I, I think that these are great improvements to ensure election, ensure election integrity, in fact. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson, specific to that, or a separate point, or? Okay, Councilmember Lohman, then we'll get back to you, Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lohman.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, and I also want to thank the resident group that did come and bring forth their, their statements about how they felt about this. You know, certainly, we have, residents have made the decision here in terms of, you know, they, they voted this in, as, as my colleague had, had mentioned that, and so a decision has been made with regard to that. So this is really not a discussion about the merits of, of ranked choice voting, or whether or not we should, should or shouldn't do that, specifically what we have here today before us. And I just want to be sure that we're very clear about this, and the mayor did that at the outset of this, that we're talking about process pieces here. One to do with the, the budget piece, which I asked the city clerk, is there any other way in which that these ballots can be configured so that six, or five, or four, or whatever could, could be that? And the answer to that was no. I trust staff with, with respect to that. And again, the mayor clarified for us today, again, that, you know, that, you know, you'll still be able to pick as many choices on the ballot as we did in the last election cycle. And then the secondary piece is the registration piece. That's what we're here to, to, to vote on here today. This, again, is not on the merits of, of, of ranked choice voting, because our residents have already decided. Because our residents have already decided with respect to this. And so that's what this council, that's what this community is expecting us to do today and not to take some other weird steps going in some other direction. So again, I appreciate residents' groups' concerns, but, but that's specifically what we're here to do today. And, and I will be supporting moving these steps forward that make complete, honest sense, logic sense. There's just, there's no ambiguity or question about whether or not we should support these changes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to add a point of clarification with regards to the three. In District Four, there were four people that ran. So if you ranked three, you'd rank your top three, and then the fourth would be the one that you really didn't want. That was same in three, a, as opposed to what we heard earlier. There wasn't one person running in any of these areas. There was, and there was actually three in the at-large seat. So the three seems to work. It, it were, it was the same number of candidates that were in the at-large seat. It was, we had four in the other seats. And again, the fourth would just be, eh, that person I really don't prefer. So, and, and I just, I don't say that to be flippant about it. I think that the three works based on what the number of people that chose to run, this is a nonpartisan election. These are the number of people that chose to run in a nonpartisan election. And it works on our ballot. It's what the Bloomington voters, as, as Mr. Lohman said, chose to do. I'll be honest, I'm not the biggest fan of ranked choice voting. You know, I'm, I'm pretty agnostic on it. And yet it's what people chose, you know? And, and it's, it's not my position to overrule the people on something that we put on the ballot and they decided on. And I think this cleans it up and makes the ballot work. And I see zero problems having three people ranked based on our previous experience with it. And the other question seems to not be related. I think it makes complete sense for our staff to be able to eliminate, you know, complete, you know, made up names very quickly. So I am privileged to have the last name of Nelson and not DeLaSandro. So I sure have that privilege.
Somebody made mine up at Ellis Island, because that's not how it was, you know, so fair enough.
Yeah. I happen to be Nell's son.
Councilmember Lohman, council, is there any additional questions, comments on this? Councilmember Lohman?
All right, well, let's go get, get this puppy rocking and rolling here. I move a motion for an ordinance amending Chapter Three of the city code related to rules of conduct for municipal elections and the ranked choice voting method.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Nelson to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Three of the city code related to the rules of conduct for ranked choice voting in municipal elections. Any further discussion on this, council? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I move to direct summary publication of ordinances amending Chapter Three of the city code related to the rules of conduct for municipal elections and the ranked choice voting method.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Nelson regarding summary publication on item five, on item 4.2. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you much, Ms. Capioni.
Thank you.
For the information and for cleaning this up and moving this forward. Appreciate it. We will move on to item five on our agenda, our organizational business. Our first item on our organizational business is an update on Bloomington Tomorrow Together, our strategic plan. And I think there's a, a large cast stepping forward on this one, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong. Who's going to take the charge?
Hello, yeah, I'll get us started.
Get us started, please.
We should introduce ourselves, since there's so many of us.
Okay.
I'm Brianna Eicheldinger. I am in the finance office.
I'm Ashley Clemmer, and I work in communications.
Noah, Fall Day, the city manager's office.
I'm a stress sustainability coordinator.
Welcome to all of you.
Thank you. Okay, so, good evening. We're here tonight to provide an update on our progress as we've been working to make the strategic plan measurable and provide a preview of the new dashboard that's powered by Invisio. Hundreds of community members and city staff have been involved in bringing the city's new five-year strategic plan to life over the last couple of years. Over half of the people involved in the planning process were community members, which exceeded the city's goal. The community-driven plan resulted in the following mission statement: To cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. So let's look at a brief review of where we started and how we got to this point tonight. So the BTT planning process started in fall 2021 with community events during which residents and stakeholders shared their vision for the future of Bloomington. Then, community members and city staff formed three teams tasked with compiling and reacting to community feedback. The core planning team developed the original plan, while action teams and a measurement team expanded on the core planning team's recommendations. In late 2022, another group of city staff gathered to create a measurable and actionable work plan that will carry the work forward to help reach the community's goals. The work plan has three priorities and nine desired outcomes. And staff has developed a variety of initiatives to support these desired outcomes. Now, Ashley will share what staff have been working on to align the plan to reflect the community's goals.
Thanks, Brianna. The vision created by the community-based planning groups is the foundation for the measurable, actionable work plan that city staff developed. The three strategic objectives you see on your screen, or, well, these aren't the strategic objectives, excuse me. The three strategic objectives laid out in the community-based document became the three priority areas that you see on your screen in the work plan. A connected, welcoming community, a healthy community, and a community with equitable economic growth. After we had these three priority areas, we needed to decide on some impactful ways to move the needle, which resulted in our nine desired outcomes you also see on the screen. And once we had decided on our desired outcomes, we brainstormed initiatives that would help us achieve those outcomes and, as a result, the community's goals. Many of the initiatives that you see in the work plan come directly from the work the community-based planning groups did. For example, I facilitated an action team that was focused on how the city could build trusting relationships that acknowledge diversity. And a few of the ideas that came out of that group were expanding creative place-making citywide and developing a neighborhood identity model. And both of those things appear exactly as initiatives under the welcoming, connected community priority area. And those are just a few examples of the direct impact that community's work has had on the staff's work plan. And now I'm going to hand it off to Noah so he can tell us more about how he'll be measuring our progress.
Mayor and councilmembers? As mentioned, we'll be using Invisio to measure our performance, progress, and status of the Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic plan, also commonly referred to as the BTT. As of today, the Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic planning dashboard is up and running. You can find the dashboard on the community-based strategic planning webpage on the city's website. Or you can also find it just from a straight Google search. Using the dashboard, we can measure the progress of our actions, determine the status of our initiatives, and measure the efficacy of our work by tracking data and setting goals related to the BTT strategic outcomes. The BTT dashboard will display our progress on all levels, from citywide planning to the priority level, to outcomes, to the initiatives that drive our plan forward. Emma will discuss the benefits of tracking data on Invisio briefly.
So next, I'm going to talk about one of the benefits. And we're going to use the city's climate data as an example. We get our climate data from many different sources. So we have transportation data from MinDOT. We have our energy data from CenterPoint Energy and Excel Energy. And the process right now is each year I request from CenterPoint or Excel information, and I get that on the Excel spreadsheet. And then I save it in a folder. And if anyone has questions throughout the city on what the city's climate data or status is, they need to talk to me or staff needs to contact me. That information isn't necessarily transparent. It takes some staff time to pull together that information, and it's in many different locations. So, next slide. Invisio is really taking all of those different pieces of information and putting them in a single location. It's making it transparent and it's saving some staff time from pulling those individual requests.
That was an incredible drum roll. Made my dashboard and all the work that we've all put in. I just feel like,
It's worth it.
Yes, I'm like, wow, okay. So each quarter, you can expect a report on the Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic plan. And you can always expect three parts of the report. First, a status update. The statuses are determined by the timeliness of the action plans and whether we're able to meet that timeline. Second, a checklist. These have milestones that can be created, edited, and marked as complete, hopefully. And those action plans demonstrate progress towards the BTT. And then lastly, a narrative summary that has highlights, barriers over the last quarter, as well as expected progress for the next quarter. And so if you refer to the draft report in the agenda packet, here is a sample layout of the progress tracker. At the top of the page, it says 1.2.2. What that means is it's referring to the place and the purpose of this initiative in the strategic plan. So expanding creative place-making falls under the first priority, a connected and welcoming community. Under the second outcome, welcoming city, the city will welcome its residents. And it is the second initiative listed in that category, hence 1.2.2. There you'll find a timeline at the top and a status, which is on track. Next, you see a checklist. And on that checklist, there are seven milestones. One of them is already crossed off, and these can be edited over time as the work may change as it reflects the environment that we work in. Last is that narrative summary where there is highlights listed, barriers listed, and progress we hope to reach over the next quarter. So aside of the, aside from those quarterly progress reports, you can expect an annual report on the community-led strategic outcomes. This report reflects yearly changes in the data as they relate to the BTT outcomes. The purpose of this report is to check whether we're able to make the impact we want to make. As many great thinkers and leaders have stated before, if you can't measure it, you can't manage it, and you can't improve it. So as an example, under priority one, outcome two, 1.2, people are welcomed by the city. We will track survey scores for how welcome people feel. Instead of having to comb through a 104-page national community survey report, even though it's very great, the data will be, that is relevant to the BTT, will be easily accessible on the dashboard. On the dashboard, you can always find longitudinal data, so you can see the trend over time. However, on the outcome tracker, if we refer over here, you'll get a quick snapshot of the change in the data over the past year. The purpose of these summary labels is so you can get a quick takeaway on the annual shift in the stats. These labels will be useful for addressing shifts that we need to make in order to reach our goal of 85% of residents feeling welcomed by 2030. Again, here is another data example on the Bloomington Tomorrow Together dashboard for priority three, outcome two, expanded diversity in business ownership. Here you can see an established trend in the American Community Survey data since 2015. Now, if we refer again to the outcome tracker, these annual reports give us a snapshot of the journey and where we are on that journey in ensuring equity and where we are on our target towards 945 women-owned businesses in Bloomington by 2030. So what can you expect from future reports as well as the BTT dashboard? Both will be more concise. They're going to be simple and neat. They will be understandable. As I've stated to other people before, the goal of the dashboard and the reports is that you're able to look at it, see four sides, like a square, like if you can imagine looking at a square, there's four equal sides. I want you to be able to look at the dashboard and say, hey, that's a square. Most of all, they'll be pleasing to the eye using images and visuals to consolidate complex data into digestible, easy graphics. Brianna will now tell you a bit more about the BTT, the BTT dashboard, and your role in it.
Okay, so you may be wondering, what is our role here? And council, we are asking that you monitor our quarterly reports, read through them, take it in, see if you have questions. We're also looking for your support and encouragement, and then, of course, aligning resources. So if we're moving toward an outcome with all of these great initiatives behind it, we might come to looking for resources to make those things possible. And then as community members, we're looking for our community around us to stay informed by utilizing the dashboard and find opportunities to partner. We'll have a lot more information out front and easy to see. And the hope there is that all the talent and great people in our community will be able to come forward and see ways that they can fit in to make Bloomington even better. And then after today, so today's the public launch of our dashboard. You can go to our website on the BTT dedicated page and, and see and click through all of the different, go as deep as you want on the dashboard. And then this summer, we'll be back with our first quarterly report. The one in your packet today is our draft, our, our first run at it. But our first official one will be this summer in July. And then in the fall, the core planning team will be invited to reconvene. We'll talk with them, have a day retreat to kind of regroup and kind of look back on what we've done and how we can make this even better. And then in October, we'll be back again with our next quarterly report. And we plan to do a staff survey to measure how things are going on the staff side, see if we're still all in alignment on how this progress is moving forward. And then again, in Jan, I'm sorry, in January 2024, we'll provide a first annual report. So you'll get these quarterly check-ins and then an overview each year annually in January.
Any questions?
Well, thank you all for the presentation and thank you for your work on this. I can tell it's, it's been a bit of work. And I appreciate that because this whole process has been a bit of work. And I appreciate where we are with it and looking forward, as, as, as always, to see how it comes forward and where we move with it. Mr. Verbrugge, you moved your microphone like you wanted to say something. Is that correct?
Boy Scouts creed, to always be prepared, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Counsel, do we have any questions of our presenters? Councilmember DeLaSandro?
I think, thank you all for being here and presenting this. This data nerd is very excited. I'm, I would love, I, I feel like I have an understanding about this, but I think, maybe for the folks with us on this, maybe you could describe a little bit. The, the decisions about what data you have on the dashboard were made how and by whom?
Mayor, Councilmember DeLaSandro. We had a performance management micro-business, which consisted of about 20 members across almost every single department and division in the city. On top of that, we also did what is called a measurement gallery. And so we had posters up available for staff to come through and offer suggestions for what kind of data we should track for performance measures for the BTT. And that is also something we plan on continuing to do each year to continue to get staff input for those performance measures. We also took that input from the core planning team, that a measurement group, and we took some of those suggestions from them and just looked for the data there and put it on the dashboard.
I appreciate you providing that context. The only caution I ever make about data is that we don't eat our own, right? That's, that's it. Staff can't be the deciding what the metrics are and then go, look, we met them. Because that seems disingenuous at times, although you guys are great. Don't get me wrong. So I want to be sure, I want to be sure that we have an understanding of what the outside view of that data is for folks. And if there's, if there is input or disagreement within the community that those things aren't the things they think you should be tracking, that we have a mechanism for getting that feedback, especially in this first year, which will make it even better, right? So, yeah, great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Sorry, if I may, Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLaSandro, one of the opportunities that you will get every quarter is to validate the data, whether it's the right data point for us. And so there's regular check-ins and say, you know what, we've met that one three quarters in a row. Have you thought about doing this one or thought about changing a new target, maybe being more ambitious? So this is intended to be interactive and iterative. And then the core planning team also gets a chance to weigh in every year as well. So that we think this is the start of 20 more conversations about it. But the system is in place to capture and report, which I think is something we're really proud of.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I am tremendously excited about this and excited about it from the beginning of the strategic planning process. But the way you've synthesized it, to your point, to be able to point at the square and say, I mean, here's the future of our community boiled down into a glance, is really neat. I guess my, my big question is, obviously, this will be posted online. People can go to it if they're curious. When, how often and where will we be putting this proactively in front of residents? Is this a standing column in the briefing after every quarterly report? Or have we thought about what that looks like? thought about what that looks like?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Martin, it could certainly be a standing column in the briefing every quarter. I'm sure that we're going to be talking about the different initiatives as we go along and they become accomplished. It'll also be something that we post on social media, and the short link will be printed on it. Everything, it'll be in like email signatures and everything, so it will be out there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I only mention that because, obviously, we do an amazing job communicating as a city about what we're up to. We win awards for it all the time, but this feels different in kind to what I've ever heard of cities doing in terms of putting this in front of the community to say, we trust you enough to show you when we stumble and when we don't make as much progress as you're expecting us to. And we trust you to reach out and to prod us, to offer your help, to the point about the slide about community involvement. I've never heard of a city being so radically honest and transparent with residents, and I look forward to how that might help build trust in government in general.
Other questions? Councilmember Lowman.
My colleagues, the mayor, have done a great job of thanking you, and I don't need to also say it my way, but just know, it's there. So with respect to, you know, getting behind, you know, in terms of we've got things in here, I know as a part of the welcoming team, you know, we've got a lot of ambitious things here, and I'm like, wow, we've got a lot of stuff here for August, October, and August again. How does that work? You know, because, I mean, you know, I'm trying to think, our next get-together, I think is in July, we review this, so that may not be enough time to turn that around. So let's see if we get behind with that. Do we, you know, change these dates in here, push that out? How does that work from a scorecard kind of standpoint? Do we leave the dates in here and set up new dates, and we're just behind? Help me understand how that kind of works in terms of...
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Lowman. So for the scorecards, that summary label that we looked at earlier with the data, that's going to be on an annual basis. For the timelines for those actions that often kind of fall pretty top-loaded early on, those are decided by staff, and they've been creating their own action plans. So as those get checked off, they are determined by staff as they have a measure of success, so they know, have I met this milestone that I wanted to achieve? And if they are not meeting those milestones, they can push the dates back. And then, also, as far as creating new initiatives or new actions, those timelines can also be added or edited. Did that help answer your question, Councilmember Lowman?
Sort of, but I think I get the general sense that the annual is really where the measurements is happening and not in the work plan. So those dates can be more flexible, which is good, because my next question was going to be for the manager. You know, one of the things that you've expressed to me, I'm not sure if this was in public or if not, but it's in terms of capacity, you know, as now that we've laid all this stuff out, you know, and that's always been one of my concerns, now we've got these measurements out here, we're going to try to accomplish these things, and we've got the ongoing business of the, you know, service-related things that, you know, for the most part, they do relate to most of these things we're doing here. But then there are the other seven strategic priorities that we kind of had in the past. And so I guess what my question is, is now that you've got this laid out, you've got these three different buckets, there may be more buckets than that of work that are out there, like the expo, you know, and other things that are going on, how, from a capacity standpoint, do you feel like you're supported enough? Is staff able to handle this workload that we've got here, or do we need to, at the outset, look to try to make sure at the front end that you have what you need in order to get them? And then I have one last question for you with the piece here.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Lowman, each of these items have an owner identified with them, and so part of the obligation for those owners is to be able to talk to either their supervisor or to the city manager about having the resources needed to make sure that they're able to move this forward. And so, just like anything else we do around here, it's always a resource question, right? And so the expectation is that the owners for those different projects will be effectively communicating whether or not they have what they need to move forward, and if we find that their circumstances were, we're seeing maybe a couple or three times to the previous question about what happens if we're not seeing progress on something, then it becomes a discussion about where we are committing resources and whether that needs to change.
So that conversation happened at the quarterly level, is my understanding? Okay, so then, my last question then is on 156, so this is just, I know this is just an example, and it's just with the BIPOC piece there. So you have the averages that go across there, where you have those averages that are across the top of that bar with respect to the different, so it's kind of a twofold question here. So with respect to that, I'm trying to understand, you know, that last part, I think it was 73%, is that a combination of the two? Is that a weighted average? How does that work? Help me understand how that works.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Lowman. That is a weighted average from the National Community Survey by Polco. They calculate that themselves, and then this data has just been grabbed from that report. And so the difference there is representative of the different populations, but those populations are weighted in the average.
Okay, and then that gets to my next question, because I would imagine, because I remember the way I recall that survey is that it was broken down amongst different groups. Is there a way to break, is there going to be a way to break this out, you know, in there so you can see from a policymaker standpoint, you know, yes, it's good to know that, you know, that overall group, this is not just for this, it's really for anything that we're currently, this is more conceptual, I'm trying to understand it. Will there be a way to kind of break that down, or would I have to go back to the survey in order to get that breakdown?
Yeah, thank you again, Mayor and Councilmember Lowman. That is something I've actually talked with the Invisio developers about, creating a little demographic dropdown. They do have different demographic items. As far as race, it is only considered white and non-white. We are talking about in several different areas, as far as the census and community surveys, as far as broadening the racial demographics. And then, as far as talking with Invisio, we do want to create a dropdown box, so you can select people who've lived here a certain amount of time and get the different scores there, select different districts are another option on the National Community Survey. That is another different type of data point we can demonstrate for the community. Awesome.
All right, I've got other questions for you, but I can do this offline. Otherwise, we'll be here all night, and I have a feeling that people at home would be upset with me, and the guy next to me might not want that to happen.
Council, additional questions? Well, I appreciate your work, and Mr. Sable and I were talking earlier today, and he summarized it perfectly. Basically, this dashboard is, so here's our goals, here's the work plan, and here's how we're going to do this. Now, here it is, everybody, hold us accountable, and send it out to the community, send it out to the council, and I think that's what everybody expects and what everybody demands, basically. This is how we're going to do all this. This is a, as I said, when I started this, this is not a small project. This is something that we've poured a lot of resources and a lot of efforts into, and I think to really make this a success, we need this type of thing specifically to hold us all accountable. And when I say all of us, it's the communal all of us accountable to do what we said we were going to do when we set out on this very ambitious strategic planning process. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to seeing more. Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I just want to say thank you to the team. They've done fantastic work, and it's not just the four who are in front of you. There've literally been dozens of folks who have been working on this. I do want to call out a little special commendation for Noah, who is our management intern. All of the other people on the term, on the team, have established relationships in the organization, and I'm sure for those of you who have been an intern in the past, you know what it's like to parachute into an organization and not have a lot of network established, and Noah has had to build relationships very quickly and answer people's questions about why is the city manager dropping somebody into our department to talk about this stuff, right? So Noah's done a really good job, and thanks, Mike, for supporting Noah, and the whole team has done really, really good work. I'm eager to get this back in front of our core planning team and the measurement team and the action teams, just to show them the update, because I feel really good about where we're at, too, so I appreciate the comments from the council tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. We'll wrap up this evening with item 5.2, our city council policy and issue updates. First thing we do, I'll just recap very quickly. We had two people speak at our listening session this evening, and they were actually speaking in tandem, Kim Vosovich and Dan Curry, Norman Ridge residents. They were continuing the discussion regarding the proposed R1 ordinance change, and they brought together or brought forward a creation, a proposal for the creation of a new zoning district, a residential environmental preservation district. And they provided us some examples and some possible ways that it could be applied across the city, and we had a good discussion as the council, and we may continue that discussion a little bit later this evening. So as we go forward, we'll talk about that. In terms of policy and issues that I just had a couple of questions on, either Mr. Verbrugge or I think Ms. Scipione just ducked out very quickly here. We had the, we heard the conversation earlier about ranked choice voting. I know that we had a community petition against ranked choice voting, to change it, to put it on the ballot, to change it. The language was deemed to be unconstitutional. I think it's at some level of the courts in the state of Minnesota right now. Where does that stand, and then where does it stand in terms of the timing of it all as we head into April now and start pushing into our campaign and election season here in Bloomington? Why don't we start with Ms. Mandershead?
Mayor, I'll, thank you. Mayor members, I'll start. Christina, I'm confident, has a slide on this because we anticipated this question. And so I'll start talking, and then Christina will show you the slide on the dates. The item, the litigation that you referred to is at the Minnesota Supreme Court. It went up to the Supreme Court on accelerated review, and the court can take as much time as it likes, as it needs, as it wants, to return an opinion to us. We have not been made aware of a pending release of that opinion. And I think it's also important to note that the opinion that comes out may not be decisive on the specific issue. The court may remand, the court may do, frankly, whatever it wants. And so we are preparing for all the different possible things that we can think of, and I think tonight was one example. We know for sure that there's going to be an election, and we needed to tidy up some administrative elements to it. And with that introduction, and I'll turn it over to you with regard to the timing.
Ms. Scipione.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So as a little background, under state law, the city is allowed to run elections on five dates within the year. They're the uniform election dates, and I circle them in my calendar every single year. And then the city also has a notification period where we need to notify the county we're running an election 74 days before that election. And so you can see here, we've got our uniform election dates for 2023, and then the notification date that we would have to meet in order to run the election. The county needs time to prepare the ballots, prepare the equipment. And so, logistically, this year, we've missed the February 14th and the April 11th to run a special. May 9th, we've missed the notification date for that. So the only two elections that would be available to us this year would be the August 8th and the November 7th, if we were going to need to put something on the ballot as a special election. The candidate filing period for the November 7th general election this year is August 1st through 15th, because we don't have a primary. And so if we were ordered, let's say, to run a special election on August 8th, which is kind of the last available date for us, it would be right in the middle of candidate filing for the November 7th election. And so it would be much too late to reinstate a primary and run candidate filing, which would have had to have happened at the end of May for 2023. So this election cycle, just because of how far we are along in the year, right, we're looking at having RCV in the November 2023 election, because we can't meet the dates for candidate filing, for noticing that candidate filing, running a special, and still have it impact the 2023 election cycle.
So it's a calendar issue more than anything else right now in terms of, we're moving forward with RCV for this fall's election primarily because it's a calendar issue. We know there are folks who are petitioning against it, who wish to make a change, but the bottom line is, just from a practical standpoint, it's not manageable to do this year. Is that correct?
Mayor and City Council, that's correct. It's all down to logistics a lot of times in elections.
Councilmember DeLisandro, a question?
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, that doesn't preclude the question being potentially on the ballot for November of '23, but it's just that our '23 election will run for the council seats as an RCV election, because that is too late.
I believe that is a correct statement.
Is that a fair...
Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, that is correct. There still could potentially be a question on the November 7th election, but that would impact future elections, not the one we're holding this year. Thank you.
Got it. Council, additional questions? Well, thank you, and thank you for having the slide ready.
I'm so excited I got to use it.
You did very well. Very well done. Thank you. Mr. Verbrugge, anything to bring forward as part of policy and issue updates?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, nothing to particularly bring forward from a policy perspective. I do want to acknowledge that the last week has been rough for people in the law enforcement community, and I think council saw it today, that I sent a message to the staff in our police department following the shooting death of Officer Deputy Owen in Pope County and the week before, this past weekend, Officers Brydenbach and Shield in Western Wisconsin. And it's a reminder to us that our police officers are asked to do a really difficult job and often under difficult circumstances, and I think it's important that we acknowledge that when we have issues like this happen, that we have a good number of our staff who carry an extra burden and want to make sure that they know that we're thinking about them, that we're grateful to them and appreciate the work that they do every day, keeping our community safe, and recognize that, you know, that every day that they go into the job, there's a chance that something life-altering could happen. And that's a condition that they accept willingly in their commitment to the service. So I just want to thank everybody who works for our police department, especially our sworn officers, and everyone who supports our police officers in the work that they do.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Very well said. Thank you. Council, anything else to bring forward under policy and issue update? Councilmember Lowman?
So I just, well, actually, I got one and then a question. So I know that residents come to me, I know we just had the whole proclamation with the volunteer event piece, and we talked about the work that's being done around just deeds, but there's some confusion in terms of the, and I did mention it to the city manager earlier today, and just wanted to get clarification. You know, they'd said that, you know, the human rights didn't know if they can still work on that, if that's still taking place, what's happening with that. So wanted to just get clarity for that resident that had questions about that, you know, is this something that's going, that's, you know, it's ready for business? And then I also have, you know, I'm going to be, I've got some folks who've asked me some questions, too, that I want to get back to them. There's some type of interview around this whole concept, too, and I wanted to just be sure that I'm all up and up on that before I...
Ms. Mandershead?
Thank you, Mayor members. Yes, so there are a couple of different buckets, so to speak, that these properties fall into. There was an HRA-owned property, and that was discharged. There are 30 parcels that are city-owned, and we've met with the planning folks to figure out, because when they were created, they don't look like they do now. You know, they're like different now, or under freeways and things like that. And so we met with them to come up with a plan for how we're going to discharge the public properties, and the publicly owned, and by that, I mean city-owned. And we, I've been working with Jamie to get some additional staff resources to help us with that. As a part of the carryover budget that you all approved earlier this year, it included financial assistance to hire a law clerk. That law clerk started about a month ago, and we had our just deeds training on Friday afternoon. Our whole civil department went to that, and so she is going to be commencing the process to discharge those 30 city-owned properties. We're going to do the Torrens properties first, which are registered and very quick, and the abstract ones will take a little bit longer, but we're hopeful that we'll get that done this year. that done this year. And then the third bucket is the privately owned properties. Those are, those, all of those property owners received a letter from the mayor about 18 months ago. And, and it directed them to a form on our website, the just deeds page on our city website. They completed a form on the website and that auto creates an entry in a database that we have. And we push that information to our private law firm partners. Larkin Hoffman is the one that you met tonight. And you heard Mr. Smith make a call to his other legal professionals to help. There are a lot of properties. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I can get that. There are a handful that have been discharged. The law firms have a process. They have to run a conflict check. They have to, they have to engage in a representation agreement. And so there's a little bit of process, but they're marching through them, but there's a lot of them. And so we need more lawyers to step up and help out. It'd be great if they live in Bloomington, but they can live anywhere. And for those lawyers that might be listening, you can register on the just deeds website or through the Volunteer Lawyers Network to assist in that. As someone who has gone to the training, it takes about 20 minutes per parcel, once you get good at it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess the only question is, is there any more role for the Human Rights Commission with this? Or is this, is there a role with this, this work pretty much done?
You know, I think the, and the mayor alluded to this during the proclamation discussion. Mayor members, the huge part of this is education and learning about our history in the city of Bloomington and how this type of racial restrictive covenant has lifelong tales for our community and how it impacts generational wealth and opportunities. So there is a, there are materials, presentation materials on our website, links to some TPT films that encourage everyone to watch. There's also some books that we have available. Color of Law is one of them, if people are interested in learning more. Also learned about another book on Friday that I emailed Jamie about that I'm going to be reading. So there's a lot of materials out there for people that want to learn more, but they need to become a participant in that process and, and frankly, discover the realities of the not-too-distant past.
Well, thank you for that. And that, I think it covers that piece. So my other question for you, Mayor, you know, given that we have, you know, two less of our members, does it make sense to have, you know, any conversation or discussion with regard to the proposal that was, was brought forward to us? Or does it just make sense, you know, just to have that summary that you've kind of thrown out there and kind of wait till we get the entire council here? What, what makes sense to you?
I mean, I'll defer to the, the opinions of the council here, but I do think it makes sense to have a full council before we have a discussion like that. This is, this is a big discussion and we've been, we've been consistent with our statements that we want to make sure that we look at all options and we have all, we had this comprehensive discussion on how best to manage this, this zone, this potential zoning change. And I think to have it without two members of the council here, I think is doing them a bit of a disservice. I, I understand there's, there's timing issues involved and it, it could slow things down. It could, it could, you know, could throw a monkey wrench into things, but I really do think it would be best to do if we had the rest of the council here.
Well, you know, and I'm going to agree with you, not just because I've got the same shirt on. But I do share your, because I just, my fear is we have a conversation today without members that are missing and it, to me, it feels like we're leaving them out of the process. And I just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that.
Agreed. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, on that topic, obviously, the folks that visited under listening session this evening presented some information to you. I'm, I don't want to presume council direction, but I'm guessing that you would like me to share that with the appropriate staff and at least have them provide a preliminary feedback or be prepared to do that during the conversation on May 1st. Is general nodding of heads you'd like me to do that? You know, I think what they're, what they've proposed is to the point, something that would probably take much more study, but we can at least have a somewhat informed opinion as an input to the conversation on May 1st.
I think that's, that's correct direction. I don't think, I don't think the council would disagree with that, that at least to continue this discussion and continue vetting perhaps of what they brought forward and what, what some of the options might be. Council, anything else? In general? Now, we're going to in general now. Councilmember D'Alessandro?
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I know that there were a couple more incidents in, at 102nd Street. We talked about it. It happened again. I'm just wondering if, I can't recall and I, so something that we can bring back and maybe our, our, you know, I apologize, Kirk or somebody can help us with it. I got the chance to see Dr. Melby from our public schools on Thursday at an event, or Friday at event. And, you know, we, we don't have a program for school zones as part of what we do here. And I just don't know if the active transportation plan work is going to include that or not, but it feels to me like that is a fairly straightforward way to solve some of the problems that are there, regardless of all of the machinations around reconstruction and everything like that. We have several schools in that area. Can we, can we do something about that, that during school hours, we slow things down there or something to that effect, just to make sure that the folks that are concerned have some safety there? That's just an ask, and I can't recall, I don't feel like I've seen it in any of the documentation that's been put forward. Traffic calming has been there generally speaking, but not in specifically school zones. And so I know the folks at, on 84th Street at Poplar Bridge would appreciate it too. I've heard about that in my own district, so something there. Secondly, I think Councilmember Loman participated in this in real time, maybe, maybe not, but I did get the chance to review a webinar from, from Hennepin County on microtransit, the pilot that they've got in the north part of Minneapolis. It's a really interesting option. We've talked a lot in the city, including in our strategic planning work we did last summer, about ways that we could get intra-city transit options for folks who don't necessarily have a car. This seems like it might be working. I don't know. I mean, it's worth reviewing. So I wanted to bring that to attention. I don't know if Councilmember Loman wants to make a comment on it or not, but I think we should consider looking into that and, and maybe, you know, maybe we can conduct a pilot or something here in Bloomington to see how that goes. Councilmember?
Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, what I would say is I think it'd be very interesting to have more of a conversation about it. Did come up during our meeting on Thursday for the transit meeting. I don't know why my brain is not working here.
35 W, right?
Yeah, 35 W solution. And we did talk about that. What I thought was interesting about it is how they're paying for it. And so I think it's the cost is the question that I have in, they're kind of using it for that last mile. You know, when we talk about accessibility and that kind of thing, I do think there's some interesting pieces there, but you know, if you're suggesting a pilot, I think it's worth it. But I'd want to know, again, how we'd pay for it, you know, and how we'd figure that out. But that's not a reason to not do a pilot or not figure it out. But I think that I would recommend that we have a look at that and some other things too. But I, I don't want to have that conversation right now, so.
No, no, it was mostly that I don't know if staff was aware that, that that was happening or that that might be an option to pursue. So if you, if you haven't seen the webinar and you want to see it, I can forward it to everybody that is interested in, I don't know, city manager, if you were on that or not, but happy to forward it to you as well.
Mr. Verugui?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember D'Alessandro, I was not aware of it. I was just going to ask if we had any city staff that you're aware of that participated because I'm looking, doing some Googling and I'm on the Hennepin County website and I'm not finding anything about microtransit. So if you have materials to share, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I will forward it on. I don't know the answer to that question because when I got the chance to watch it, I didn't see the audience per se. Yeah, okay. And then lastly, an update on fire station number four. I've had some residents inquiring. There's a, there's been a lot of noise specifically over there as one does when, when one is in construction. But I know that there were some conversations early on about how the landscaping and the greening of the, you know, if we were doing some trellis work or other things like that to really understand how that, if it's, if it's supposedly being done in May, it seems like we're far away from that, but I don't know. Maybe the outside gets done in May. But a couple of things, noise generally speaking, like what's the operations noise impact going to be? Are there generators or the things like that that are going to run continuously? Like continuously was an open question. Number two, lighting. We have lighting right now that is on all the time and points directly at residents because it's high up now, right? And we want to think about that. And thirdly, the air raid siren that was moved across the street, is it coming back? So if we could get a little bit of an understanding of, of some of that and then even maybe host another open house or something over there now that the weather's getting nicer to kind of bring residents to the table to help them understand, I think that would be also awesome.
I think all are good suggestions and, and I would hope, you know, understanding that a fire station in the neighborhood is, there's going to be some noise when trucks roll in the night. I mean, it's going to happen every now and again, but I agree, issues of lighting, issues of excessive noise, issues of just neighborhood impact should, should definitely be addressed before, before we get too far past opening.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was mostly a question of, of what would be like the ongoing, apparently for a couple of weeks or I wouldn't, I don't even think it was that long, because they were curing the brick, there were, and the temperature was too low, there were constant noise, right? And, and that was unexpected by the residents. And so we're just not doing, we're just not doing a great job of, of noticing when we're doing these things over there and giving people like a sense for what's happening. So if there are going to be ongoing known noise impacts or lighting impacts or other things like that, you know, and we don't have the ability, for example, to put motion detectors on those lights so that they go off when they're not necessary in the stairwells and, you know, that kind of thing. Those are the kinds of things I think we should make sure we can tell people because I think we probably know, we just haven't been telling them. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Good suggestions. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just thank Councilmember D'Alessandro for bringing up 102nd Street. And I know there were concerns and it is, I guess, adjacent to my district. I don't know, like, it's like, it's the...
Depends on what side you're on.
Yeah, what side you're on, I guess. So, and, and so I just want to make sure that people are aware that, that this is not an issue that the city is taking lightly. The city has plans and is working on looking at that intersection, working with the county, studying it, looking at the entire 102nd between Normandale and France and planning for that. We as a council have approved some things and have been very, very clear that they are interim steps and not a final solution to those issues. And I'd also like to just make sure people are aware that the city looks at crash statistics and has made improvements at 98th and Normandale, which has leveled nearly five times as many crashes as the 102nd and France Avenue, and has made improvements at Old Shakopee and Xerxes, which has almost four times as many crashes. So I, I appreciate our staff's work to take a look at the priority spaces, including 102nd and France. But we have put the city money, which are limited resources, into places that have a high crash rate. And to, you know, candidly, I get a little offended when anyone implies that our staff is ignoring a problem and I'm going to stand up and defend them. In addition, I know that there was comments with regards to the response time of our police department. And I think it's important for people to know that that was called in as an accident without injuries. And they responded not in 10 minutes, but in eight minutes from the information that we received. And I assume, and maybe the city manager can, can correct or clarify this, but if someone had called that in as an accident with injuries, it wouldn't have been just police, it would have been a line of paramedics, it would have been others, and it would have been extremely prioritized to get there immediately. Am I accurate in that?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Nelson, yes.
Okay, thank you. I just, I think that, that information is important and, and again, I, I don't like the connotations of people disparaging our staff, our police officers in terms of their responses and in terms of looking at safety in our community. They do a great job. We do not have unlimited funds. We cannot make an accident-free city. We will look at the priorities, we will direct the money as best we can to deal with the biggest situations. And I completely agree with my colleague, Councilmember D'Alessandro, that 102nd Street, that whole corridor is a priority and we will continue to look for solutions there. But please don't disparage our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Well said. Councilmember Loman, quick thing to add?
Yeah, one little quick thing to add, well, like put it this way. I, I know that, and you were probably on council when that intersection came up the first time, you know, of, of many times. And, you know, I think the community had made a decision to go in a certain direction. So it's sort of the way that it is now, given those historical decisions that were made at that point in time. The other thing I was going to mention, I appreciate my colleagues have done a great job of outlining what's going on there, but I want to just mention that on Tuesday, I had the opportunity to spend about 20 to 30 minutes talking about this whole corridor with, with our city engineer and as a part of our sustainability piece. And so just know that there is, you know, even though you don't see it necessarily, there's work being done all across this city, you know, as my, you know, colleagues have, you know, either, you know, in the past or in the present that, that folks may not see that's going on. So I just want to just highlight that and just, just so you, everyone knows.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Sorry to bet hadn't how long we'd go tonight, so I'm trying to win. So no, I, I just wanted to thank our staff for one other item. We had an individual at our listening session, which I think is one of the very good examples of how well the listening session is working. And this individual wants to sell eggs in the morning to me, near me. And there's some things within what we did with food trucks that, that make that problematic. Staff has already quickly looked at it and then put it into miscellaneous issues, updates for our consideration, not final approval until we, we take a look at it. And so I have a question for the city manager. When do you think that would be before us? Because they were looking at an opening date and I'm assuming that we won't meet that. And so I'm just wondering when that might be that we would take a look at it.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, I'll have to get back to you with that.
Okay, that's fine. And part of the reason I bring that up is I think that's totally appropriate. I know there are two paths. You can sometimes get something that makes sense to staff and they put it into the miscellaneous. You can also do a business, an individual can do a privately initiated, but there is a cost to that. They could do that to expedite that process in a certain way and get it, get it heard before that. And I just, I appreciate my colleagues because I'm, I'm one that was like, I'm a small business owner and I see something, I'm like, let's just change that, let's fix that. And that's one of the things I've learned from being on council and working in a city is there is a reason for the process. There are things that we may miss. I remember we had, before Councilmember Mua was here, we had, we had the whole group of people and our planning commissioner, Mr. Cockton, was here talking about a time where somebody came forward and had information that conflicted with some engineer's information. And turned out the resident was right and they had to redo everything. And so I like the process. I hate the speed of it, but I like the process and, and I'm so looking forward to this young entrepreneur getting their business going and everything like that. So again, thanks to staff, but for those of you that are like, why don't they just change it? Why don't they just do it? There's a reason why we don't do that because everyone would be lined up here going, hey, just change it for me, just do this for me, do that for me. And we can't, we can't run a city that way. And so I just wanted to let you know, let people know that that is another issue that is being worked on, taken seriously and a great example of the listening session. And Mayor, you've brought this up so many times, that listening session is working way better than I had ever imagined it would work in terms of actually addressing people's concerns and questions. So I was a bit skeptical and you guys were completely right on that, so.
Agreed. Thank you. Council, anything else? I am going to finish up. We are, we are now a little more than a month out from Saturday, May 20th, when we are going to have our police department open house and our public works... to have our police department open house and our public works open house. And if it's the public works open house, that means it's going to rain on May 20th, but we'll hope not, because I think every time I've been to the public works open house, it's been in the driving rainstorm. I think it has, and we haven't had it for a couple of years, so I'm looking forward to having it again. It's going to be a fun Saturday, but I want everybody to get it on their calendar now, Saturday, May 20th. It's like 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., I believe, food trucks, there'll be all kinds of fun stuff. The public works open house is a great time, always is, so please do join us, get it on your calendars now, and I'll plug it at least a couple more times between now and then as well. Council, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this evening. We got a motion and a second to adjourn. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned. Thank you all. Thanks, council, for the discussion. Thanks to the staff. Congratulations to our new firefighters this evening, and thanks to everybody who tuned in and participated. Well done. Good meeting.